Twenty-three. Would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Would someone make a motion to approve this agenda, adopt this agenda? Sorry.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Could I have a second, please?
Sure.
Everyone in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? The agenda is adopted. Has everyone a chance to review the minutes from the meeting held June 20th, 2023?
Yeah.
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve them?
Some would.
Would you like to second them?
I'll second.
All right. Everyone in favor of approving the minutes of the meeting held June 20th, 2023, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone not in favor, say aye. And the minutes are approved. Now we have a public comment period for items not on the agenda. We do have any non-agenda items tonight?
I do not. I don't think, unless anyone's here to speak on items not on the agenda.
Okay. Then we have a public hearing for zoning tax amendment request by Daniel Cyrus, representing Thomas Builders of Virginia, agent for Waynesboro Senior Living LLC, to amend City Code Section 98-2.6.4 to remove Part C, except in the CB District, multi-family building parcels and upper-story residential units in non-residential districts shall not exceed a density of eight units per acre. And now you can have the show.
Okay, thank you. So the first item on the agenda this evening is a zoning text amendment. The applicant has requested an amendment for Section 98-2.6.4, residential area and dimensional standards. Make sure this is on.
Oh, take now is just a wonderful thing.
And so these are in, those area and dimensional standards are for non-residential districts. The request is to remove the density restriction that's in Part C. And it currently reads, except in the CB District, multi-family buildings, parcels and upper-story residential units in non-residential districts shall not exceed a density of eight units per acre. So the applicant has identified that the ordinance is too restrictive to allow a site to be developed to its full potential residentially in a business zoning. So some of the background, the ordinance permits multi-family buildings in certain non-residential districts by a conditional use permit. So that would be in local business, highway business, mixed business, and central business districts. Upper-story residential is actually permitted by right in most non-residential districts, but a CUP is required if it's light industrial or in the light industrial district. So in non-residential zoning districts, you can have residential development currently, but it is limited to eight units an acre. And requires a conditional use permit regardless of the number. So Section 98-2.6.4 regulates the area and dimensional standards for that type of development in non-residential districts. So these are the four different tenets under that section. So one is that area and dimensional standards for single-family detached two-family houses, corner lot duplexes, and multiplexes shall be the same as in the RG5 district. Then it has a requirement that is, will, would remain the same, that area and dimensional standards for townhouses and multi-family building uses are established through the conditional use permit review process. However, in highway business and commercial business districts, no townhouse or multi-family building shall be established in a parcel less than 20,000 square feet in area, and that is not proposed to change. The amendment would be to eliminate C, as discussed, that has a cap on eight units per acre for residential development, multi-family buildings in non-residential districts. And so essentially, if this amendment were to be approved, if anyone wanted to come forward and apply for either upper-story residential or a standalone multi-family building in a non-residential district, they would have the ability to do so, and the density number would be set through the conditional use permit process. That would be defined and capped through that process. And then the last that is not proposed to change is that upper-story residential is permitted on the upper floors of a non-residential building and shall comply with all the area and dimensional standards of the principal building. So this just reiterates that change in red, that the proposal would be to eliminate C and allow for the density to be set through the conditional use permit process. So for a zoning text amendment, the ordinance in 98-7.3.8 requires that the Planning Commission and City Council consider six criteria when evaluating zoning text amendments. So first is whether such amendment is consistent with good zoning practice. Next is public necessity, convenience, and general welfare to the extent such factors are pertinent to the subject matter of the amendment. The extent to which the proposed text amendment is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the remainder of the zoning chapter. The extent to which the proposed text amendment represents a new idea, not considered in the existing ordinance, or represents a revision necessitated by changing circumstances over time. Whether or not the proposed text amendment corrects an error in the chapter, and whether or not the proposed text amendment revises the chapter to comply with state, federal statutes, or case law. So in the staff report that you received in your packets, the analysis in Section 4 kind of goes over some of those ten tenets. So the amendment would remove Part C and would relieve all the other requirements intact. It's noted that restricting the density of a commercially zoned site that may be granted a conditional use permit already for multi-family or townhouse development to eight units an acre limits the development potential of the site. Mixed-use development is good zoning practice, and the 2008 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map promotes compact and varied residential uses. And it specifically says that alternative housing types and in appropriate locations at higher residential densities. It encourages more compact residential development close to areas of intense activity, such as downtown, along Hopeman Parkway, and along the I-64 and Rossar Avenue interchange. So staff notes that revising the zoning ordinance to set the density for townhouses or multi-family buildings during the conditional use permit process would allow projects to really be examined on their own merits and appropriateness to that specific site. So with that, the city does recommend, the city staff recommends approval of the ordinance as provided. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I've actually been meaning to ask this for a while. When it comes to our parking mandates, what are some of our parking mandates when it comes to new construction at this point?
That's a good question. For our multi-family.
Do you know the?
Two.
Two per.
Per unit. Okay. And then, is that, what do you mean?
So it would be, we don't designate them by the specific, excuse me, the specific zoning districts. We designate it by the uses. So it would be considered multi-family and have to go by that parking mat.
Do you think that would be a reasonable expectation to put on the developers of this? So I've been thinking about this location for a long time, actually I think since I moved to Waynesboro, how this would be a perfect location for housing. Just because it's in a really great spot when it comes to walkability for food, clothing, access to the Akron Express, and I feel also Bright comes through there as well. So it just makes, it makes sense as a location that wouldn't necessarily need to be covered with that much parking because of those access, because of that immediate access to transit and immediate access to work, leisure, and basic necessities. Do you think that would, would that have to apply?
It would have to apply. So the only way to do something different with that would be some type of amendment related to parking in general. And, you know, it's, it's a point well taken. Parking is a difficult thing to put into an ordinance because it creates requirements and all situations are different. We would have to build more flexibility into our parking ordinance for it to apply in this scenario. But this, for now, is just the text amendment.
Right, right, right.
But happy to answer any other questions.
Thanks for answering that.
Go ahead. I've got two questions. If I remember right, reading through the proposal, the Fire Department and Utilities have already signed off on this.
So essentially, with this conditional use permit process, we're, you know, it's similar to a rezoning.
Yep.
And, and so we're kind of getting everything in place. And yes, we have departments review the general concept because the applicant has, and staff has recommended a condition that when developed, if approved, that it would be in general conformance with the concept plan that's provided. So we wouldn't want to say that and then have later down the site plan stage, fire come through and say, oh, we don't have the 20-foot access aisle, or this or that. So there will be a lot more scrutiny placed on it even, you know, down the road during the site plan stage, but they have given their initial reactions that the layout kind of meets their general, you know, any concerns that they would have.
Now, did they take into, the Fire Department, when they considered this, did they take into account the timeframe for the new West End Fire Station to be built? Or are they basing it on their response times from down the street here?
So I, I don't know if they got into that level of detail regarding it at this time. It was more just a general look at the conceptual layout. And then certainly, fire flow requirements will have to be, you know, certified and made sure that they're met during the site plan stage. So nobody has really given that level of review at this time, if approved. And if a site plan is submitted, all of that would be reviewed at that point.
My other question is, if I remember right, this property straddles the city and county line. Has the county already signed off on their site?
So we don't, so with this piece of property and with the conditional use permit requirement, it's a state law requirement, we do have to notify, like, the county administrator to say, there's a public hearing tonight, and it's adjacent to your locality if you're interested in coming. And we do also have to personally notify county residents that abut the property.
Yep.
So we have done those things, but we have not received comments or feedback directly from county administration, but they have been made aware that there is a public hearing tonight on this.
My question, I spent some time looking at the old ordinance, and I can think of a couple of properties in the city that are non-conforming with the ordinance. What was the process prior to, I guess my question was sort of to raise the next question I have, which is, what has the process been to get around? Have the special use permits in the past?
So you're talking about if it has more than eight units an acre? You know, because we're, we definitely have more than eight units an acre if it's zoned appropriately, but you're saying if it's zoned, you know, if it's zoned multi-family, you're allowed up to 20 units an acre.
Right.
So I'm not, I don't know.
Maybe I'm, wasn't the residential behind Alhama Windy Grove, wasn't that?
So that's done through a planned unit development.
Right, so that was a different process.
So it is, it's a different kind of zoning designation where they can have a mixture of uses. They lay them out by acreage. So yeah, that's a planned unit development. Yeah.
Okay. And so this is just, rather than change the zoning here, we're going to change the ordinance?
So it's, it's kind of twofold. So the ordinance currently would allow some, you know, it's interesting because some localities would say, no residential in business zoning. And then some would say, you have to have, the only way you can have residential is if it's an upper-story residential. Our ordinance doesn't say that. It says you can have residential, either upper-story or a standalone apartment building, but you're limited to eight units an acre. And I, you know, I guess it comes back to, why is that in there?
That was a question.
If we would, and I don't think anybody, you know, the ordinance was done in 2010. You know, I wasn't here. I'm, I'm sure there was some reason by it, but it, it feels like it limits the development potential.
Right.
If we did not want to have residential at all in business, we could say that. Or if we wanted it to be only upper-story residential, but it even limits the upper-story residential to eight units an acre. And that's confusing. So, you know, not that, you know, these go hand in hand, both of these applications, but essentially, it would be, you know, the text amendment is dealing with that portion of it to say, through a conditional use permit process on a case-by-case basis, we're going to allow standalone residential to see if, you know, through, to see if it makes sense, and the density would be set during that process, rather than the eight units.
Do you know if this is planned to be mixed use, or is this planned to be strictly residential?
So the concept plan, which I'll show in a minute, does include some out parcels on Rossar that would be business. So there's no CUP requested for those. They would be some type of business. And that it's only, you know, the larger portion of the site that would be for the residential apartments.
I'll just save my next question for later.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? So I think it probably would make sense to open the public hearing for this and close it.
Right.
And then I can go, and you don't have to, I don't think, you know, you don't have to make a decision, but just open and close the public hearing related to the text amendment.
Okay.
And then we could move right into my presentation on, on the others.
Okay.
So I guess I should ask a question now, then?
Mm-hmm.
I just didn't ask, is, do you know if it's going to be like a four over one, three over one, two over one? Like, do you know that part of the next part?
Yeah, so I will go all into that in the next part.
You have to kind of do this first.
Yeah, it's confusing because it's like, you know, you know it's related to something else. But this is a text amendment that would apply to the city as a whole and allow for business zoning to have full-on multi-family uses and townhouse uses
Right, without.
at a density over eight units an acre, but a density set through the CUP process.
Now, would that change the use for the proposed building where the old Leggitt's building is? I know, what was it, two years ago, Shannon, we approved for them to tear that down and build some retail on the bottom and apartments on the top. Would that affect that?
So what I would have to do is look at, if that was a conditional use permit, what conditions were placed on it?
The only thing approved was for them to knock it down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Be to go around the National Historic Register or whatever.
So if, well, this is specifically, I mean, that is non-residential, in non-residential districts. So, you know, yes, if this were to go through, it could open up, you know, more possibilities for the number of upper-story residential allowed based on that footprint, if eight units an acre didn't work for them.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Right.
But only through the CUP process.
Okay, so.
Except, I want to make sure, because upper-story, upper-story is permitted by right in most non-residential districts. So to be clear. But yes, CB Central Business is exempt from that. But yes, you'd have that, open up that flexibility.
Now, is there a reason we shouldn't post public hearing for this specific zoning tax amendment? Is there a reason we shouldn't vote on it right now?
No, you could, however you'd like to proceed.
Because you mentioned closing the hearing and then doing it anyway, but.
Yes, you could make your recommendation on this prior to us moving to the next, if you'd like. I just didn't want you to feel pressured to do that if you'd rather hear the next section, kind of thing.
Okay, well, to me, it seems like we should do this without the other.
Yeah.
That's just my, that's why.
And I will, when, you can go ahead and open the public hearing. And then the applicant did specifically apply for this zoning text amendment, so if they would like to say anything regarding it.
Okay. Okay, me and my hand sanitizer want to open the public hearing to amend City Code Section 98-2.6.4 to remove C, except in the CB District, multi-family building parcels and upper-story residential units in non-residential districts shall not exceed a density of eight units per acre. So if the applicant wants to come forward, if anyone else wants to come forward, you just have to give me your name and address, and I'm going to zap you if you go longer than three minutes.
Oh, that's happened to me before. Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Cyrus. My address is 103 West Edgeway, Lynchburg, Virginia. I'll be brief, and, and I'll talk to you again about the next thing that's on the agenda here as far as our project. And Leslie did a great job of explaining the text amendment, but I just want to hit a couple of high points. So as far as the text amendment goes, I think it's really important to remember that the conditional use permit requirement is still staying in place. So effectively, the only thing that this is doing is this is allowing the Planning Commission and City Council to judge projects based on their own merits for what the density should be. And I think, I'll kind of give you a little bit more background about who I am when I talk about the next thing, but we do a lot of these projects throughout the state. And I think it's important for localities to consider zoning ordinances and opening up ordinances to a point to where people who wish to do project in different, projects in different localities have the ability to do that, but still, the governing body retains control over that. And I think that's exactly what this does. So I look forward to speaking with you guys further, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to approach the podium? Do we have any messages via email or snail mail? Okay, so I think I can close the public hearing. What do you guys think?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Makes sense to me.
I don't know why we wouldn't
Right.
do a provision that nobody knows why it exists.
That just seems so arbitrary. It seems very arbitrary to me, too.
More house in Waynesboro, right.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to recommend that City Code Section 98-2.6.4 to remove C, except in the CB District, multi-family building parcels and upper-story residential units in non-residential districts shall not exceed a density of eight units per acre?
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to amend City Code.
Okay.
Section 98-2.6.4.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
Everyone in favor of recommending the amendment as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone not in favor, say aye. And so the recommendation carries. And we can move on to our next public hearing.
Okay, so the next is a conditional use permit request. The nature of the request is that the conditional use permit for multi-family residential in the Highway Business District, specifically for 651 Town Center Drive and a portion of 150 P Buckley House Drive, that multi-b buildings are permitted in the HB District by a CUP. The proposal is specifically for five, four-to-five-story multi-family buildings. It would be a total of 252 units. The conditional use permit application tied to the zoning text amendment, amending eight units per acre, the density restriction that we have previously covered. So the location of the property, you can see, is right there, right off the I-64 Rossar Interchange, right on the city line with Augusta County. This just provides a little bit more of a zoomed-in outline of the property in blue. So this allows for a case-by-case review of uses, which may be, but are not always compatible with neighboring uses. And in order to find a conditional use permit acceptable in that district, you should find that it's consistent with good zoning practice, that it has no more adverse to health, safety, or comfort of persons living or working in the area than uses generally permitted in the district, and it's no more detrimental economically or otherwise to property or improvements in the surrounding area than uses generally permitted in the district. So this is an aerial outline and kind of calls out several of the uses surrounding the property. So across Rossar, there is some single-family residential development. On the other side of Town Center Drive, you have the Discount Tire, the complex that includes the Target and Kohl's and Pet Smart, McDonald's, and all of the other restaurants that have gone in there. And then you can see to the south of the property that is in the county, there is single-family residential development. So the Comprehensive Plan does identify this area for business development or commercial retail. So while the proposed use is not in direct conformance with the city's land use plan, I will note that Section 3.2 of the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Guide, as previously noted, encourages more compact residential development close to areas of intense activity, and specifically calls out I-64 and the Rossar Avenue interchange. The staff report also notes that the subject parcel is somewhat difficult to develop commercially due to it being, you know, kind of like a landlocked property by Town Center Drive, which is private. And so the entrance has to be approved by that business entity. And so there's no usable frontage on a public road for that property. And so those are all things that went into staff's consideration look as they're analyzing whether the use is appropriate. So the plan does encourage more compact residential development close to areas of intense activity. And multi-family development is reasonable at the given location given its proximity to transit, shopping, and other amenities. So some further analysis with the zoning ordinance. As we've previously discussed, 98-2.6.4 sets the residential and dimensional standards for non-residential districts. The subject parcel meets those other standards. The lot requirement has to be a minimum of 20,000 square feet, and the lot area for the multi-family buildings is, you know, over 400,000 square feet. It does exceed the density requirement of eight units an acre, as currently discussed. So we did note that the applicant's concept plan proposes five multi-family buildings with a total of 252 units, and that the proposed conditions identified with the application would cap the development to that number. So this was included in your packets, maybe somewhat hard to see here, but it shows the, the general concept plan provided. So if approved, the development would be in general conformance with this concept plan. You can see those five buildings and the associated parking areas down in the lower right-hand corner. You see some stormwater management area, an area for a clubhouse and pool location. You see the kind of buffer area shown all the way around the outside, and that's identified as a Class B buffer, which is required adjacent to, when, when it's adjacent, like residential and commercial are adjacent to one another. That has been included along the county boundary also. And then you can see among the dotted black dash lines, the proposed subdivision of the property to create three different out parcels in the front, essentially. That would be for, remain, you know, highway business for business development. That would be for remain, you know, highway business for business development. I think it skipped one. So the proposal is for 252 units on an 11.15 acre parcel once subdivided. And so staff did note that 252 units is approximately 23 units per acre, but again, that's on just that parcel, not those other out parcels that will later be divided, but is a larger. So the 23 units is only on the residential portion. So we did note that with that, it is three more units than what our multifamily district currently permits. 20 units per acre is the maximum, but staff kind of looked at that holistically, noting that there are other parcels that would be subdivided off, but in general, it's kind of one concept plan of development. And the, if amended to remove the eight-unit-per-acre density, then we would have the flexibility to create the density with the CUP process. So being three units more an acre than what's allowed in our multifamily, you know, could be done on this specific case based on kind of the unique location of the property. The applicant has proposed conditions that the development would be limited to the 252 units, that the development will be in general conformance with the site plan, also with the architectural stylings and materials that are shown on the building elevations, and so that is also included. So a little bit about transportation. The concept plan shows one main entrance to the development from Town Center Drive, and I have identified that Town Center Drive is a private road, and so that entrance would have to be approved, and they are working through that. And then two additional entrances are shown, a right-in, right-out at Town Center Drive, and that would be adjacent to the Discount Tire, right-in, right-out that currently exists, and then a right-in, left-in, right-out on Rossar Avenue. I will note that this is a concept plan, and the development would be in general conformance with this plan, but just showing these does not mean they are approved, that will go through a process. And so in one of the conditions, we did note that entrances would be reviewed and approved during the site plan stage, and that any kind of turn lane warrant analysis would determine if any turn lanes were needed, and that would also be done at the site plan stage. So this calls out those three entrance locations. So you can see down on Rossar, you have the right-in, right-out, left-in, the right-in, right-out on Town Center Drive across from the Discount Tire, and then that full access farther down, closer to the Kohl's property. So during our discussions with the applicant, staff identified that development would likely increase pedestrian activity in the Town Center area as people are trying to get to shopping, restaurants, the bright transit stop, which now includes Afton Express, and the carpool lot. Much of the area does have sidewalk infrastructure within that complex. And so the applicant did provide a condition that a proposed, and they show a proposed crosswalk down near that full access entrance. So applicant proposed, and staff slightly revised a condition to address some of those pedestrian safety concerns, and that condition reads that pedestrian connectivity shall provide a safe, walkable route from all dwelling units and shall include a pedestrian crossing of Town Center Drive, provided the crossing is permitted by Waynesboro Town Center LLC or their successors, since it is private. The applicant shall use all reasonable commercial efforts to gain permission for the installation of the pedestrian crosswalk at the developer's expense along Town Center Drive. So this shows a little bit more zoomed in. So you do have that full access entrance, and then farther down adjacent to, you know, near the Kohl's property, but going across Town Center Drive is where they're showing that proposed connection. So, kind of discussing the adjacent properties, most of it is surrounded by commercial development on three sides, and then single-family on the southern side and the county. The Class B buffer is required between the commercial and residential. A Class B buffer is 15 feet wide and contains one evergreen tree, one canopy tree, two under-story trees, and 16 shrubs per 100 linear feet. Staff did recommend that the Class B buffer also be provided along the boundary with the county, and that has been included in the concept plan, and you can see that along that southern boundary. Also, I will note that the maximum building height in the HB District is 50 feet, but Section 98-2.6.4 does permit area and dimensional standards to be set during the CUP process, and that would include building height. So we did discuss two designs with the applicant. They could have, could do a flat roof that may have met the height requirements, but they preferred a pitched roof, and that recognizes that the maximum building height would be 64 feet 10 inches. Staff noted that that is more aesthetically pleasing than a flat-roofed building, and the applicant did propose a condition that would limit the building height to what's shown in the elevations, which is 64 feet 10 inches, and you can see that identified in this schematic. And this is another view that was included in the application. So, very brief reviews were done to note that, yes, public water and sewer is available at the property, although fire flow and all other requirements will need to be met and figured out through the site plan stage. So in conclusion, the site is appealing for multifamily residential. Its proximity to the interstate, transit, restaurants, and shopping. There is a kind of a unique situation of the property, that it doesn't have a good commercial access except through a private road. Development will provide interconnectivity between parcels to help distribute traffic. The multifamily zoning is, you know, actually less estimated traffic than if the full property were to develop kind of to its maximum commercial potential. The pedestrian accommodations do help ensure safe access to the surrounding amenities. So finally, staff would recommend approval of the application with the following conditions. And I reviewed these, so I'm not going to read them all to you, but I'll kind of briefly highlight them. That the development would be in general conformance with the plan that you have seen and been provided, the one about pedestrian connectivity and trying to get that crossing worked out with Waynesboro Town Center. They have also made a condition that the building elevations would be in general conformance, and materials and architectural styles as those submitted with the application, that the building would not, buildings would not exceed the 64 feet 10 inches. The property will be divided in general conformance with that concept plan that shows the out parcels and the one parcel for the residential development, and that the entrances on the concept plan are really for conceptual plan purposes and will be evaluated and approved through the appropriate agencies at the site plan stage, and also that the maximum number of residential units would not exceed 252. And that's all I have unless you have any questions.
I have one question, and it just dawned on me. I noticed Bowser and Associates is the architect and developer for this property. Working for the University of Virginia, I am familiar with them, but have not been involved in the process of hiring them in over 20 years to do any projects for UVA. Is that a conflict of interest?
No, I would not think that that would be any, I mean, it's always nice to state it for the record so that you are clear and that the public is clear, but no, I don't think per any state code requirement, you would have any conflict of interest in this scenario.
Yeah, it just dawned on me when I saw their name up on the drawings, you know.
Sure. But yeah, we always note that it's important to note that for the record, but unless you are garnering some kind of individual economic benefit from the decision, then typically you're, you're, you're fine.
I'm glad I'm over the hiring process of hiring professionals.
Sure. Any other questions?
So unless they're using part of it for some sort of commercial as well, which I don't think they are, by doing math, it's around 1,500-plus feet, square feet per unit, which are pretty large units, which is great. Are there any other, are there any affordable housing options within this building at all?
That would be a good question for the applicant. I do not believe so. I believe they will be market rate, one, maybe one, two, three, a range of bedrooms, and the city does not have any requirements related to affordable housing, but that would be a question for them. But it's, it's my understanding that they would be market rate apartments.
And would the city be willing, not, right, and for this, this is a different project, but in the future, would they be willing to think about some sort of option for that? Because I know there's a lot of people within this city specifically. I think recently, it's 18% of Waynesboro citizens are below that poverty line, and that's not even the inflated one, that's just the last one that we've done, which I think we should be thinking about those citizens as well.
Yeah, it's definitely been a conversation that has been had before council and continues to be had. It's a conversation that's being had regionally. The Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission is working on a regional housing study. That data will be coming out, so it is something that people are talking about and will continue to research and work through ways that that may or may not be a part of policies and procedures that the city adopts in the future.
And then I guess my last question would be, is there any sort of speed mitigation that's going to be implemented within this plan or is being thought about and being implemented? Because there's a lot of obviously asphalt from side to side, and with this being multifamily, there are going to be multiple families here, which means there's going to be children who want to play hopscotch, jump rope in these different parking areas.
Yeah, so we typically, city staff does not typically kind of, you know, their general comments, like if you had like a long straight stretch of roadway and there wasn't, and with these, although I'm not a speed expert, there is a lot of, you know, turning movements in this that I think would, you know, help prevent that concern, but we don't have any kind of larger speed analysis or, you know, other ways. The parking islands and the configuration, I think, would help to mitigate some of that.
Great. I know we're still, we're still super early, so I'm asking questions that are way in the future.
That's okay. That's okay.
So in regards to the crosswalk, two questions. One, I noticed that they said that they would do everything possible to work with Town Center to, to get that. What are the impact or issues if, if that doesn't occur? And secondly, will it be lighted, that crosswalk? Is there any consideration, have they thought about that?
So I think those would be good questions for the applicant.
Okay, I think we can probably open the public hearing.
Sure. And the applicant is here to address.
Okay. Give me a second to get to all the lines that I have to read for this. Okay, I would like to open the public hearing. Hang on, let me find that. For a conditional use permit to allow for multifamily buildings in HB Highway Business District in the property we've been discussing at 651 Town Center Drive and 150 P Buckley Moss Drive, Waynesboro, Virginia. Public hearing is open if the applicant would like to approach the podium. You don't have to give your name and address, we know.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody, again. So I just wanted to start out by thanking staff, this is a process that we've been going through since late March. We've gone through several different revisions, and staff has been really very helpful to work through this process with, and I think that what we have here before you guys today is ultimately a better project because of that. And so I just want to give you a little brief introduction. Again, you already know, my name is Daniel Cyrus. I represent Thomas Builders of Virginia. Just to tell you a little bit about us, we are primarily a mixed-use and multifamily developer in Virginia. We've been in business for a little over 10 years. We currently have about 1,600 multifamily units under construction, and we currently have about 2,800 in the pipeline. So this is not our first rodeo. It is our first project here in Waynesboro City, and we're very excited to be here in front of you guys tonight. But I did just kind of want to give you a little bit of background that this is something that we've done throughout the state and continue to do. Another thing that's a little bit unique about us, we're actually the developer, we're also the, the general contractor, the builder, and then we actually retain ownership of these projects. And I think it's important to say that, and the reason for that is, is that the longevity of this project is really important to us. We're not here to build a project and be gone in a year. You know, we're, this is a large investment, and so we're here for the long haul with it. So I think it's important to note that. I want to talk just a little bit about the project, and staff's done a great job of explaining it, but just a couple of other things, and then I'll dive into some of the questions that got brought up. So the CUP that's before you all tonight is in reference to the multifamily portion of the project, because the commercial portion is by right. But I do think it's important to highlight the fact that this is actually a mixed-use project. There's a multifamily component, which is the 252 units, but there are three commercial out parcels that are along Rossar. And so while that's not part of the CUP, that is a part of the project, and I think it's also important to consider where the project's located. Obviously, it's located in one of the larger power centers for Waynesboro. There's already a lot of retail and restaurant and commercial uses that are in that area. So as the future land use map identifies, I think this is a logical place for higher density residential, particularly also being along the 64 corridor as well. To talk a little bit about the, the multifamily part of the project, these buildings are, will be a mix of buildings on slabs and buildings on basements, just due to the topography of the site. But by and large, the buildings are four stories tall. The buildings that are on a basement, the backside, has a, has a fifth story, which is actually the basement. So that's, that being said, the way these buildings work, really, the easiest way to think about these is not like a traditional apartment building, but more like a hotel. So they have elevators inside the buildings, and all the corridors or the hallways inside the buildings that access the units are all internal. So it's not like a typical walk-up garden-style apartment where you have an exterior staircase and, you know, you walk up two or three floors. It's all essentially similar to a hotel. You walk into a lobby, there's an elevator, you ride it to whatever floor you're going to, and then there's a corridor where all the individual units distribute from there. The, the buildings themselves, as staff mentioned, we have requested, as part of the conditional use permit, an additional height portion of the project, and the reason for that is to allow for pitched roofs versus flat roofs. It really doesn't have anything to do with the four-story component. That could actually be done with a flat roof without any change to, or without any need for that to be part of the conditional use permit by right. So the pitched roofs, we, in doing this in different areas, just adds a lot more of a residential look to the buildings versus commercial look. We feel like better and keeps with kind of the overall look of the community in this area. And so that, that's the majority of the reason behind that. It really doesn't affect the density in one way or another. I think it's also important, we talked a little bit about walkability and location. So one of the questions was about the pedestrian crosswalk, and what happens if we can't get Waynesboro Town Center, which is the entity that owns the shopping center and the private road, to agree. So I'm pleased to report, and this actually just happened today, we've been working with them since this project started, and today, we actually got their approval to put in the crosswalk. So, so that's something that the proffer says if approved, because we didn't know that until today, but that's approved. So that's really not something to worry about. And then, you know, this was kind of brought up, but I think it's important to note from a location perspective, the walkability for this to the retail that's there, as well as the walkability to the park and ride and to the existing bus facilities that are there. So I think, in my mind, that makes this a relatively obvious location for higher density residential. I want to talk a little bit about the market in the area and, and some of the affordable housing that was brought up. So we've had a market study that we've conducted over the past six months or so for the area and for this project. And, you know, this will probably come as no surprise to you all. Waynesboro is a very interesting area as far as the market from a housing perspective. And this is probably not a surprise to you guys, but the market study that we've done identified that over the next three years, 1,200 additional residential units are needed to fill the current demand. So that's just the current demand, that's not if, you know, demand starts to increase, that's just what we expect today, essentially. And so out of those 1,200 units, about 580 of those are identified as needing to be multifamily. So this project's 252 units, so really, in the grand scheme of things, it's a lot of units, but it's, it's a very small part of the need. It's interesting, so typical vacancy rate for apartments is about 5%. It's considered healthy for a market. Waynesboro is actually at almost 0%. Waynesboro is actually at almost zero percent. So if you're one of those people that, you know, the proof is in the pudding, like me, I think that's as much pudding as you can get. So talking about the affordability component, this project is a market rate project. It's not considered to be an affordable project. But I think that there's a lot of misnomers about the word affordable, right, and what it means. And so I just want to talk about that a little bit. The same market study that we identified, the median household income for the area, which is about sixty-four thousand dollars annually. So using normal metrics at what our normal rental rates and projected rental rates would be for a project like this, the salary or gross income that would be required to afford a two-bedroom unit, the middle-sized unit, is fifty-seven thousand dollars. So actually below the median household income. So, you know, I think it's important to identify that. A lot of times people talk about affordable and wanting to see affordable standalone projects. And that certainly, there's a market for that and there's a place for that, don't get me wrong. But I think it's also important to remember that a rising tide lifts all boats. And so right now, it's simple supply and demand. Waynesboro as a market area has a huge shortage of residential units. And so as more units come online, then some of those units that are perhaps older or in less desirable, you know, ways, those rents will start to come down, right? That's supply and demand. Whereas right now, there is an undersupply and so rates are going to continue to increase until that supply is rectified one way or the other. So I think that's an important consideration from the affordable perspective. And again, just to kind of reiterate, you know, the suggested conditions that we have offered and that staff has included here, I think the big ones to consider here are the conformity to the current site plan. So being essentially what you see is what you get, you're not approving a certain number of units. They could look totally different from this as far as the site plan. And that also holds true for the elevations of the exterior of the buildings. So, you know, these buildings are durable materials, they're brick, they're stone, they're hardy board. You know, they're not vinyl siding boxes. These are really nice architectural buildings that we take a lot of pride in, in what they look like at the end of the day. Because like I said, you know, continuing to maintain them over the next thirty, forty years is something that we're going to be tasked with doing. So it's really important to us. I think it's also, you know, obviously this area right now is zoned highway business, so it's zoned for business use. And it hasn't been developed, and a big reason for that is because of the fact that it only has frontage on Town Center Drive, which frankly, you know, the owners of that are a business and they don't want other businesses to compete with them. That's the reality, right? So I think that this is a really unique location for a residential project. And part of this project also allows the property that's currently owned by the Virginia Tech Foundation to be opened up for commercial development as well, that's set unused for some time. So again, I think I've addressed, oh, a couple of other questions I didn't address. Unit size was mentioned, so units range, they're one, two, and three-bedroom units, so they range from about thirteen-hundred to eighteen-hundred square feet. So fifteen-hundred square foot's right on. And as far as, we talked about the crosswalk, but as far as speed within the community, a lot of what we do, and it kind of bodes towards the look of our projects, we end up with a lot of curb islands and a lot of landscapes. A lot of that is visual, a lot of big part of that is visually narrowing the width of the road and that actually causes people to slow down. If they feel like they're driving in a big open area and they can't hit anything, they're going to drive fast. If they feel like they could hit something, they're going to slow down and take their time. So that's something that I think in some ways kind of self-mitigates itself. And usually we end up with big, long stretches, we end up with some different speed bumps and things along that nature. Again, you know, this is something we do from the management side too, so we're pretty used to a lot of those types of things that kind of come up in these communities. But if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them and otherwise.
You said that Town Center had approved the crosswalk.
Yes, sir.
Does that mean they approved the two entrance exits as well?
Yes, sir. So they have approved the entrance exit for the apartments right now. That's shown, that's across from, that's at the lower side. We are still working with them to approve the right-in, right-out. And frankly, that goes back to the fact that that's for a commercial use. So that's been a much more arduous process to get them to approve. Because essentially, they want to restrict what some of the uses are on those out parcels that could potentially compete with them.
Your reasoning for your going from a flat roof to a pitched roof, was that partly because of the machinery, the maintenance? You could put their handlers and all of that and hide them in the pitched roof?
Yes, and so can we go to the building elevation? So that's the way that our buildings are actually designed. So it's hard to see in this and really you won't be able to see it from the ground, but all of the equipment is actually on the roof in a flat section. So you won't see air handlers and stuff like that sitting around the building like you see at most apartment complexes. Yep. And it just, you know, this is a little bit more of a residential style. You've got the pretty steep pitched roof. Those areas where you see the columns, those are all porches, every unit has a porch. And so those are wood columns, so it just has a lot more residential feel to it versus, we do some projects in some areas where the flat roof, that's a lot more modern look and just didn't really feel like that quite fit the area.
Yeah, the porches, do they face Town Center or do they face Rossar?
It depends on the orientation of the building, but every unit, essentially the long side of every building has a porch. So some of them are facing other units. And then I guess one building does face Rossar, really none of them face Town Center, they all face internal to the developer.
Except the two in the very rear.
Yeah, right. Yep, it's just side elevation of the building. Again, you know, it's, these buildings, we have a lot of different materials on them. So at the bottom is brick, at the first and basically one and a half stories is brick. Above that is board and batten, cementitious siding. And then on the fronts, there's a lot of large stone elements that are a part of that. So the, you know, the building from a massing perspective and shape perspective has a lot of different features visually that most apartment buildings don't. And then we use a lot of different materials to try to kind of create an interesting look to the building.
I know the fire department will get into it once they get a hold of it and I reckon you can tell my background is in construction. Is that a wet system or a dry system?
So the sprinkler on this is a dry system.
Dry system.
And we have met with the fire department about this a couple of times. We've worked with them a lot on drive aisles and spacing and kind of increasing the width of some drive aisles for apparatus. These buildings also have two stairwells and there's a stand pipe in each stairwell as well.
Yeah, okay. Which is typical for any classroom building, commercial building.
It is, you're right. Some apartment buildings, a lot of apartment buildings don't have those. So that's something that we kind of add to them, but you're right, for a commercial building, it's required.
And this is a little one-off, I'm not sure if it's something you guys have even thought about. Is there any place for bicycle parking as well, just so you don't have a pile of weird bikes?
Yeah, so two things with that. So outside of the buildings, we'll have outdoor bicycle parking. And quite frankly, that is an ordinance requirement. But another thing that we do as part of our clubhouse area, so I didn't really talk about that, we'll have a clubhouse amenity space, gym, pool, co-working space for people who work from home, things along those lines. But part of that is generally a bike storage room, so people have bikes for longer-term storage.
That's amazing, because I'm seeing a lot more e-bikes in this region as we're building onto our greenways.
Yeah, yeah, that's something we've started to do in really all of our communities and our tenants really enjoy it. I mean, that's something, you know, as things change, we've started to, you know, add electrical vehicle charging stations and stuff like that, that we've started to, you know, see become really popular.
That's really cool.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I know this doesn't have anything, but just so to keep Rossar, is maintenance staff going to be on-site for the residents?
Yeah, so we have, it depends on the size of the property, but we have a property manager that's on staff. And then they, depending on the size, have a maintenance team of usually one to three people, depending on the property. So again, you know, we keep these buildings and we manage them and so maintaining them is really important to us because, you know, what the buildings look like and how they function and the tenant experience, obviously. I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, that's either we're successful or we're not, right? So it's important to us.
I mean, I think it's a great opportunity. I mean, it's located to a lot of retail, a lot of transit, easy access to the interstate for those that don't utilize Bright or the Afton Express.
I was struck by, and maybe this was intentional, maybe it wasn't, the sort of architectural appeal it shares with Fairfax, inspiration it shares with Fairfax all, first thing, especially with the history, so I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, we really, my background is more from an architectural perspective, so we take a lot of pride in what the buildings look like.
I hadn't noticed that, well, and I live right behind.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we have other people who want to approach the podium, you need to give your name and address.
Name's Robert Brooks, eighty-two Little Lane, I'm south of this. So I guess the main question is, can you go back to the site plan?
Sure.
That we have. There you go, can you blow up the southern part? No, you can't. Okay, I want to know what the, at what point? Because it's not over, Bowser doesn't take it up. But when there's a major storm, there's a river that goes through here, down to this Little Lane. What's the plan for that? Because if you back that up, you're going to flood my property. Which of course will not make me happy. So I just want to, what is the plan for that? Because it really doesn't show up on anything.
So they will be required to have a stormwater management plan through the city, so all of that would be kind of, this is, would be the very initial approval? And then if approved, there would be a site plan, stormwater management, and they would have to retain that water on there.
Yeah, I see the retention pond done already. But there's an inlet there, right beside it, that goes underneath Coles, that goes out to that retention pond behind, what is that, Old Navy now or back in there? So I know that's what that little dry creek bit, it's buried in all the trees. And I know that's what it's for, because it catches all the water from the other side of Rossar where the apartments are and it comes down through there. But our only concern was that, you know, this is y'all's business, not ours, I just don't want the property flooded. So.
If I, can I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, so just, and I'd be happy to give you my contact information and talk about your concerns you guys have. But essentially, as part of the project, we'll actually have to retain all the water that's on-site and release it over time. And so there's that underground pond that's there, and it'll actually probably end up being some underground detention ponds, which is basically the same.
To catch us in the presence of slope.
Yeah, and so really, right now, that property, the way it's sloped, all the water is going towards that river portion that you're talking about, right?
Yes.
So as part of our project, as part of the grading of the project, yes, there's a lot of asphalt buildings that are being put there. But it actually will help redirect a lot of that water away from there.
So you got that, but what you got coming from lad, I think what you got coming from there is a river. It is bad when you have a big dam for it. So you have yours on top of that mixing, it's a lot of water.
I hear you. And so, and really, ultimately, the area you're talking about is right where all of our buildings are too, right? So we don't want it to flood either. So that's kind of part of, you know, I know it sounds like kind of a cop-out answer, but that is part of what we'll work through with the site plan process, is to figure out how to reroute some of that water and address that at that point.
Oh, there it does, the plant, it's hard to see up there. There it does show a roebereen swale that looks like it was previously delineated.
Yes.
Out the right side.
Yes, that's, that's that tree, that's that, I call it, it's like a dry creek bottom. Which it does hold water for a good bit. But is there any more concern? Oh.
Well, it does show the prophecy. I guess it's going to be prophecy trees. And they're going to be big enough to actually give prophecy.
Yeah, the tree, I mean, that tree buffer is pretty intense, to be honest with you. So there's a lot of trees there.
Because what I'm making, and what I'm envisioning, there's nothing we can do about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, well, and the good thing, and I hear you, the good thing is, is really all the porches face, I'm not saying people can't see, right? But for the most part, they're all kind of facing where they're from. But that buffer does go all the way around that.
Because we're the only residents, this affects.
Yes. And I'd be happy to, I'll give you my card and stuff, I'd be happy to talk to you guys about this.
We're just, you know, we were very excited about it. We thought it was senior living according to the paperwork that we've seen, it looked like that. Now a little bit more concerned that it was not.
Understood, yeah.
Do we have any other people who want to approach the podium? We're a very warm and friendly place. Do we have any email or other people who want to say anything? Okay, so I think I can close the public hearing.
I know it's going to be a lot of disappointed because the rumor got started, it's a Longhorn Steakhouse coming on that problem.
Could be though, could be, could be.
We can add, you know, we can add a conditional use permit everywhere. I hope for years they would build a Costco down there, I never even thought about the roadway thing, that whole problem that's.
Yeah. So do we have any other discussion amongst us or?
I have one thing, so last month I was asking about a connection from, it's in the same area actually, from Corner Park to the backside of Town Center. And as we were talking about it with staff, we were then informed that they're planning on actually connecting three-forty from the end of Town Center to Delphine Side.
Yeah.
Oh, I hadn't heard that, I was like, huh, I'm not sure if.
It's been approved for a while, I think, but it's like anything with the highway department is, I think construction isn't scheduled to start until twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, something like it.
So is there a way to revisit that? I'm not sure if that is in the best interest of Waynesboro, because they already have the two connections, the ninety-four exit and the ninety-six exit that connects three-forty. And I think it's ironic that they're going to be placing three-forty adjacent to the, what is it? The Virginia Wildlife Preservation Center.
Is that relative to this or is that just a?
No, this is, oh, sorry.
We need to, we need to. We need to.
Yeah, please.
Get, think about, talk about this conditional use permit. Sorry, it's okay, it's easy to, it's easy to think big, it's easy to think big. So we, I guess, need to make, someone needs to make a motion to either recommend this conditional, right?
I'll make a motion that we recommend the conditional use permit requested by Daniel Cyrus, representing Thomas Builders of Virginia, agent for Waynesboro Senior Living LLC, owner of six-fifty-one Town Center Drive, tax map parcel sixty-one-five-six B, and agent for the Virginia Tech Foundation, owner of the one-fifty P Buckley Moss Drive, tax map parcel fifty-nine-one-one, portion to allow for multifamily residential in the HB Highway Business District at six-thirty-one Town Center Drive, tax map parcel sixty-one, sixty-one-five-six B and one-fifty, one-fifty P Buckley Moss Drive, Waynesboro, Virginia.
We have a second? Everyone in favor of recommending the conditional use permit as stated?
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? And the motion carries. And we are on to public hearing number three. Things are going to really get exciting now. This is a public hearing for text amendment, a text amendment to amend section 98-7.2.5, notice in public hearing of the city's zoning ordinance and section 78-38 public notice prior to preliminary plat review of the city's subdivision ordinance.
It's complex, lots of words, huh? So this one is interesting. I don't have any slides on it, but the information was provided to you in your packets. There has been a recent state code change regarding notification requirements and how far in advance you can advertise in the newspaper, which is a requirement for your public hearings. And so this is related to that, that they recently came in, I guess it changed in July 1st, that you could not have the first notice in the paper more than 14 days before the date of intended adoption. And so we just need to amend this code section to match those other places in the code. Based on legal counsel's advice, they think it'll likely get amended again. It was kind of, I guess, it maybe didn't get at the intent of what some legislators were looking for, but we need to do this just to make it compliant with the situation now.
So this is one of those things...
It's just a state code requirement, and we're fixing it to make it match.
Like number six on that list of when you can amend.
Yeah, and it just went into effect July 1st, and so legal counsel said, you know, we need to fix it in a couple places in the ordinance as quickly as we can, so that's what we're doing. So that, but it is a public hearing to amend that.
Okay. So I will open the public hearing for a text amendment to amend section 98-7.2.5, notice in public hearing of the city's zoning ordinance and section 78, 78-38 public notice prior to preliminary plat review of this city's subdivision ordinance. So the public hearing is open, is there anyone who would like to speak to that? Oh, we're just trying, the state changes code all the time, and we're updating ours to make...
So to be more clear, it currently read that you had to place a notice at least five days and no more than 21 days before your public hearing. And so we would, and you have to run two consecutive ads, so we would typically run them the two prior weeks preceding the meetings. The way city council does things and the way our ordinance is structured, they have a first reading, and they hold their public hearing at that reading, and then, and they introduce the ordinance, and then it's not till two weeks later that they have it on the consent agenda typically, and it gets adopted. But the state code changed to say that you cannot run that first ad more than 14 days before the date of intended adoption. And so because of the way that council was doing it, it was more than 14 days.
Way more.
And so what we're doing with the specific section tonight is amending it to kind of scrap any, because it was referencing the 5 and 21, and now we're just saying, it's state code. It references state code that may change, may continue to change, but that's what, that's what it's doing.
So it's bringing us into compliance.
Yes, with a July 1st change.
Okay. We can't, we do this from time to time, something will change with the state. It's not, I mean, we have a public hearing about it, but we don't really have a choice. Okay, so I think I can close the public hearing. And everyone up for, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the text amendment to bring us in line with the state code.
Seconded.
Okay.
All in favor of the text amendment as stated about 14 times earlier? Say aye. Everyone opposed? And, good. Do we have any matters from staff?
I do not have any.
Do we have any commissioners, correspondents, and communication?
Have y'all started advertising for Nick's vacancy yet, Leslie?
Yes, it has been posted on the city website, and we have received some interest, you know, through applications. So yes, that'll be something, that'll be coming before council. Yes.
So is that 340 connection, is that even up for question, is that just going to happen no matter what?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, the project has gone out to bid, and there is funding that has been allocated from the dot for that project.
Yep, so 2.3.
I'd just like, I know Dwayne Jones isn't here tonight, and I don't know if he looks at any of this, but I'd just like to give a shout out to his group for the event at Extravaganza. I think they did an awesome job.
Anything else for us? Okay, someone want to make a motion that we adjourn?
I'll make a motion that, nobody can speak tonight. I'll make a motion that we adjourn the July 18th meeting of the Waynesboro Planning Commission.
Second?
Second.
Okay, everyone in favor of adjourn? Say aye. Everyone who wants to keep fighting the good fight? We are done for tonight.